I would like to call to order the regular meeting of Mishawaka City Council Meeting for October 21st, 2019. Would you please place all electronic devices on mute? If you're wearing a hat, please remove it and then would you please stand for certification.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please hold your role.
Mr. Volker?
Here.
Mr. Paston? Mr. Tanner?
Here.
Mr. Amalenti?
Here.
Mr. Benicki?
Here.
Mr. Pedro Reister?
Here.
Mr. Bellavich?
Here.
Mr. Hicksonova?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 7th, 2019. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? If not, they will be approved and received in the Clerk's office. Moving on to petitions, communications, remondays, and memorials, Madam Clerk.
This is a letter from the Board of zoning appeals regarding recommendations from their October 8th, 2019 meeting. Honorable members, a regular meeting of the Board of Mishawaka City City Plan Commission was held on the above referenced date. A found use variance was considered. Appeal number 2019-47, an appeal submitted by James and Julie Schmidt requesting a use variance for 623 East Fourth Street to allow tailoring and alteration in the small detached building formerly a beauty shop. The Board would give a vote of four to one recommended approval was assigned by Kerry Myers, administrative planner. We also have a letter from the City Plan Commission regarding recommendations from their October 8th, 2019 meeting. Honorable members, a regular meeting of the Mishawaka City Plan Commission was held on the above referenced date, at which time the following proposed ordinances were considered. Petition number 2019-11, a request submitted by GLC, MAP McKinley Trust requesting to rezone 410 West McKinley Avenue from C7 Automobile Oriented Restaurant Commercial District to C4 Automobile Oriented Commercial District. The Commission would give a vote of six to zero recommended approval. Petition number 2019-12, a petition submitted by... Submitted requesting to rezone 935 East Fifth Street from I1 Light Industrial District to R1 Single Family Residential District. The Commission would give a vote of six to zero recommended approval. Petition number 2019-13, a petition submitted by Beacon Health Systems requesting to amend the northwest capital and toll road planned unit development, 3220 Beacon Parkway Ranger to add a helipad as a permitted use. The Commission would give a vote of six to zero recommended approval. Petition number 2019-14, a petition submitted by Beacon Health Systems requesting to vacate a 20-foot strip of right-of-way formerly Evergreen Road. The Commission would give a vote of six to zero recommended approval.
New technology.
Presenting the MCO 36-7-4-6-0-5, Mishawaka City Plan Commission, submitted by Mishawaka County Council. The attached proposed ordinances regarding the above matters is signed by Kerry Myers, administrative planner. We now have a public hearing on vacation R2019-01 required by state statute on behalf of Beacon Health Systems, formerly Evergreen Road, a 20-foot strip of right-of-way.
Thank you. This is a public hearing on resolution 2019-1. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this resolution? If you would please go forward and give your name and address for the record.
I'm William Coleman. I work for Penzico Architecture Group. I'm here on behalf of Beacon Health System. I work at 416 East Monroe in Monroe Street in San Francisco. Beacon is requesting that a portion... A forgotten portion of plan be vacated in order that it may proceed to... Enter into agreement with the Indiana Department of Transportation for establishing a contiguous right-of-way between their property, I can say now, and the... In that own property along Path 11. The portion of the roadway appears not to have been included in the original property that Beacon purchased. And through this vacation, they will be able to continue their desire to have a contiguous roadway and a transfer eventually of property between Indiana Department of Transportation and their system.
Is there any question for Mr. Coleman? Thank you. You're welcome. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this resolution? Would you please come forward and give your name and address for the record? Seeing none, is there anyone who wish to speak in opposition to this resolution? If you would please come forward and give your name and address for the record. Seeing none, are there any council members that wish to speak on this resolution? Call for a question now? Your question?
No. It's closed. Public hearing.
Okay. At this time, we'll close the public hearing on resolution 2019-1. Moving on to reports of special committees. There are none. Orders on first reading, Madam Clerk.
Proposed ordinance number 2019-30 and ordinance amended Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is to rezone from C7 to C4 Car Wash Facility at 410 West McKinley Avenue.
Proposed ordinance 2019-30 will be assigned to land use planning committee?
Proposed ordinance number 2019-31 and ordinance amended Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is to rezone from I1 Light Industrial to R1 Single Family, 935 East Fifth Street.
Proposed ordinance 2019-31 will be assigned to land use planning.
Proposed ordinance number 2019-32 and ordinance amended Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance 1966 of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is a POV amendment to add a helipad as permitted use for 3220 Beacon Parkway Beacon Health Systems.
Proposed ordinance 2019-32 will be assigned to land use planning committee?
Proposed ordinance number 2019-33 and ordinance amended Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is a vacation of 20-foot strip of right-of-way for Beacon Health Systems and former Evergreen Road.
Proposed ordinance 2019-33 will also be assigned to the land use planning committee?
Proposed ordinance number 2019-34 and ordinance declaring an emergency and transferring and reappropriating funds within the budget adopted for the calendar year ending December 31st, 2019. This is transfer funds of the MDH Department in the amount of $6,500.
Proposed ordinance 2019-34 will be assigned to the Budget and Finance Committee? Resolution.
Resolution, okay. Resolution R2019-25, a resolution of the County Council of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, approving a petition of the Mishawaka City City Plan Commission for the property located at 623 East Fourth Street. This is a use variance to allow tailoring and alterations at 623 East Fourth Street.
Thank you. This is a public hearing on resolution 2019-25. Anyone wish to speak in favor of this resolution? Would you please come forward and give your name and address for the record?
Hello. My name is Matt Buchvich. City 25 East Fourth Street, Mishawaka.
My name is Fritz DeRogan. 625 East Fourth Street, Mishawaka.
Could you please repeat your name?
Fritz DeRogan.
And we are here speaking on behalf of Changing the Salon to a Tailor Shop. So Fritz is the tailor. You can go into more details about that. Just give a basic rundown. I purchased the property from James and Julie Schmidt on a land contract almost two years ago. And there was a salon in there. And there was pretty heavy traffic on a regular basis. I know the neighborhood wasn't exactly happy about the situation. They shortly moved out. And we tried filling it for like almost a year, not more, with someone. Were unable to find anyone convenient here, salon. So we... I spoke with Chris Don. She had mentioned that that also could be like a nail salon, tanning salon, some other things. So Fritz had applied to do some tailoring. So he asked if that was a possible use of it. And what he's doing is just appointment tailor shop. So people bring in, draw off clothes, and leave. So it's not a... His hours, I wouldn't say exactly what they are. I'm sure you can expand upon that. But just normal daytime hours, 9:06, maybe a few hours on Saturday. Not constant traffic. I think people have some suits that he designed himself there for people to look at when they drop their clothes off or pick them up. But I'm expecting very light traffic. And he also applied to have the handicap space removed in front of the business. That was a concern, congestion has been used in over 10 years. So that'll free up almost three spaces of parking in front of the property directly from the salon.
Any question? Mr. Meloni?
Yes, thank you. Fritz, could you tell me are you going to be the only tailor?
Yeah.
Tailor?
Yeah.
Only one doing work on suits, et cetera?
Yeah. It's okay.
And then the other quick question you mentioned that you purchased this on the land contract? If you don't mind sharing, when is the end of the term? And when will the payment be due?
Sure. And I don't have any further comments. It's between three to five years. That is the...
That's what's left on the lease? Or that was...
That's the... So you got between one to three years.
Four years.
Yeah.
So your plan is to purchase the building?
That's the plan. We've just been kind of struggling because that provides a lot of income from that unit. So we've been underwater for a year, really trying to kind of fight through and just haven't been able to get it filled. And from what we understood from talking to the neighbors, the biggest complaint was number one, lack of parking. So we were told that the handicap parking could be removed since it had been used over two to 10 years. So we're doing that. And also the amount of traffic. So there was a lot of people in and out, a lot of standing in the salon with that type of traffic. So that's why we proposed this. Fritz, I came along. It seems kind of makes sense where everybody...
Mr. Volker?
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi. Quick, quick. I have a few questions. One, do you live there? You stated your address on Fourth Street. Is that where you live?
No. So I apologize. I was thinking to say I still property. No, my address is 1415 West Avenue, Ocean.
I was 1790 Pendleton, Mishawaka.
Okay. Thank you. Is there water and a restroom in that building?
Yeah.
And is that... When you purchased that building, Mr. Buchvich, you also purchased at the same time the home behind it? Am I right correcting that?
Yeah.
So they came as a parcel?
Yeah, they're all together.
Okay. And Fritz, I'm sorry. What's your next name?
T W G. T W G. R A G E.
I'll call you Fritz T for now. What are your hours going to be?
Oh, 10:06.
Uh huh. And then will you be doing Monday through Friday?
Well, sometimes I'll be doing 10 to 12.
Okay. And then will you be doing operations in there outside of those hours? Or are those hours that you'll be occupying the building?
Occupied.
Okay. 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 You answered my question about the handicap space. And then how long did you say this was vacant?
Um, and honestly, I don't know the exact timeline. If you go back and look, it was before. This is the old property manager, so... I don't know the exact...
Okay.
In the near, abouts of a year.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Dan?
Really, I think Kate answered or asked my question, but with the fact that there's residents on the same parcel, it's all one zone parcel with the outlet being what's proposed to be a tailor shop. Used to be a beauty salon. Is the home occupied? Is it rented by somebody? And they're fine with the use of this?
Yes.
Good one to follow up. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry. How many apartments are in the house? And one up and one down? And they're both occupied? Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm checking to see in my mind, isn't that front parcel? You said it was a salon. What kind of rooming, pet rooming, silly? At one time, way back?
I'm honestly not sure.
And prior to that, it was a barber shop.
I will add a lesson to yours. What I was told is that it could be that salon encompassed any type of salon. So pets, tanning, nails, hair. And we were just having a really hard time filling it with that. And then with Fritz applied, it ended up kind of seemed to be almost better because we're talking with the neighbors and there was a lot of traffic with having to be a hair salon. They weren't happy about it, even though that's what it's zoned for. It wasn't... Didn't seem to be a good situation for being there. So when you have applied it to anybody, it really seemed like an even better opportunity because there were only... You'd bar less people and more traffic.
Yeah, it was quite old. I mean, I've been in there for a long time. It was... I did it there when I was a kid. So that's... So I see a number of people, a number of businesses in that.
Thank you, Mr. President. One quick question. Will you have, excuse me, after hour drop off? Or anytime in the evening, after hours, can somebody drop off a suit or any material to be tailored while you're not there while it's closed?
No. I call it a close.
Another question on the house. Is there a rental for residents?
Yeah, it's a rental.
Okay. There's no business going on in your house then?
No.
There used to be a music studio.
Really?
I just wondered whether it's just presidential or something.
No.
Thank you. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi, Fritz. Where do you run your business out of now?
Well, my job in the business, that's what my job is. People try to come to my house to do things for them. But I don't want to live in my house. That kind of thing doesn't even, you know? Yes, people come to my house. And I was looking for a place. And I'm a fire in this place. So basically...
How long you have been on tailoring?
A lot. I don't do it like for the living, but I'm trying to do it right now to extend, you know? But I'm trying to do... I'm trying to do it right now. But I've been doing it for a couple of years. Yeah, I'm living like that. And like that on a compound, so...
If you had to guess, how much traffic would be at your business a day?
It won't be much. There's things that... Because people drop the suit, you know? And then you don't have to wait for it. Like it had to be a time to come get it. So it's a lot.
Now, speaking from a short person, I appreciate what you do. I frequently tailor, so...
Anyone else? Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this resolution? Would you please come forward and give your name and address for the record? Anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of this resolution 2019-25? If you would come forward and give your name and address for the record? Seeing none, are there any council members that wish to speak on this resolution? Well, Mr. Benicki?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Prince, I have a question for you. This type of situation with a house with a business right up front, I mean... Of course, you weren't probably there when it was built, but in situations like this, this is more... This is more owner... The owner of the house would then run that business. It wasn't necessarily meant to be two different situations.
So the situation is... I appreciate the nature of the question, but I think zoning doesn't... Zoning and ownership don't necessarily go together. So in this case, it... I don't think you could make the correlation between somebody that would have to live there in order to operate a business there. I just don't think it's a reasonable projection if you will, on a basis of zoning. So I think it would have to be grandfathered to this extremely non-conforming situation. We have non-conforming situations all over the city. In this case, I can tell you, we can see in the Stanford Court, we recommend it in favor of it. And the reason we recommend it in favor of it is because the alternative in our mind was, and probably the best alternative would be at some point in time to demolish it or tear it down. But that would be denying him the use of the property. So you have to provide him, in my, you know, non-legal opinion on the attorney, but you have to provide him reasonable use of the property. What that is, right now, is grandfathered for a salon, a beauty shop. If you picture a beauty shop, I think of having someone turn over every 15 minutes or so, going in six or four trips. And so in our mind, you're going to be the tailor shop. We think is going to be less of an impact than what previously existed there. The other thing I can say is once it is approved for a tailor shop and the tailor shop is there for extended period of time, any other use or change in use would have to come back before the Board of Zoning Appeals and the County Council. So in our mind, it's getting better and not worse, although we never approved this type of shop in front yard based on current zoning standards. I don't know my answer to your question.
In a run of that way, I mean, to me, it just seems like, you know, there's a lot of people. And just so you know, beauty shop, I've never seen a woman come out in 15 minutes.
I'm skipping my own haircut, so it's not...
I've seen them take half a day. So I detect a difference on the traffic violations. Yeah, I just, you know, when I picture the older, when they built onto the front of the house, my Bush on the west side of South Bend, you know, she had a house. They built the insurance office right out in front of the building. So, you know, then things were more acceptable back then. And just to kind of split these things up just so that they can, you know, prompt that it's not necessarily owner occupied on either one. So I don't know how that can affect the neighborhood.
I think... That's a good question, Mr. Buchvich. Then keep it down. The way to... This is a zoning issue and not an ownership issue. So we have a lot of rentals, as you're aware, in the city. Some are very well cared for, some are not well cared for. That's a separate issue with zoning in the matter that we're talking about. So although I appreciate that your question regarding how the property might be maintained, that's separate from the zoning and the use of the property and the use of the building.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Who wishes to...
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to chime in for what's worth, Mr. Prince. I agree with your legal analysis with regard to the... I think you raise some good points. But I think it falls more in the category of a challenge to the petitioners in light of the unique nature of this property. And Mr. Evans did a great job referencing that this... Anybody who drives by, I'm sure would agree that this is the echo of the Bygones Herald when stores and other facilities were more common. But I do agree with your current comments with regard to the land use component. That's incredible, this thing. But again, I think it's incumbent upon these petitioners to be even more sensitive to the neighbors and the impact that they're going to have on their neighbors than other commercial entities would. And I suspect that my colleagues would join me in challenging you to be the best neighbor that you can at all times to the people who live next door. If it weren't for the fact that this had been zoned for commercial use in 1977, quite frankly, I would vote against it. Because I think today, it makes less sense for that to be interjected in a residential neighborhood than it did in either 1925 or 1977. But in light of the fact that it has been zoned in a similar fashion for that time, I'm going to defer to Mr. Prince and support the recommendation of staff with regard to approving this. But again, I promise you that we will hear from the neighbors if you do not live up to the commitments that you've made to us to be good neighbors. And in particular, our friend and colleague, Mr. Evans, will hear from disconstituents about it. He will report back to us. And I'm confident that we'll try to do everything we can as a city to hold you to those commitments. So I wish you well as you begin your business venture. But please do take every reasonable step that you can to be sensitive to the needs of the people who will be in that case.
Any other questions? I have one. Is your children built separately or is it built to the house?
I personally did not investigate that, Mr. Evans. But normally, the situation goes with separate structures that would be built separately. And you get a lot of fine line there. So probably gas electric are built separately sometimes, water and sewer. If it's a combined tap going in, it would be built together. But we didn't investigate that as far as...
Yeah, I was curious on that. You know, with separate buildings, whether the children is built to the house connected probably way back or at the house?
Almost connected together.
And little businesses.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Prince?
Mr. President?
Yeah?
Our friend and colleague, Mr. Bellavich, has corrected me as he is due. I stand corrected. This is actually in Mrs. Volker's district, but my comments about Mr. Evans apply equally to Mrs. Volker. He's also not in touch with the neighbors. And we'll keep an eye on this situation very closely. So let the record show that I stand corrected. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any other questions again? Thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no other council members that wish to speak, I call for the question. Madam Clerk, would you please hold your counsel?
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Paston? I'm sorry. Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Amalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Ms. Pedro Reister?
Yes.
Mr. Bellavich?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonova?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
The resolution passes 820.
Moving on to ordinance on second reading, Madam Clerk.
Proposed ordinance number 2019-21, an ordinance fixing the salaries of certain elected officials of the City of Mishawaka for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The committee report, please.
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the County Council of the City of Mishawaka, your committee on Budget and Finance, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance number 2019-21, report that they have examined said matter and that in their opinion, it should be adopted. This is signed by a majority of the committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Second, all of the favor of the committee report, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, same side? Thank you. This is the second reading of public hearing on proposed ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty one. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance, would you please come forward and give your name and address for the record?
Good evening, Mr. President. I'm the county council Rebecca Miller, city comptroller. I'm here tonight to seek your approval of the elected official salary ordinance for twenty twenty. It's made with a one and a half percent plus five hundred dollar increase from two thousand nineteen.
Any question? For Miss Miller? Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this resolution? Would you please come forward and give your name and address for the record? Seeing none, is there anyone which can speak in opposition to this resolution? If you would come forward and give your name and address for the record? Seeing none, are there any council members that wish to speak on this resolution? Seeing none, I call for the question.
Question?
Madam clerk, would you please hold the council?
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Mamelanti?
Yes.
Mr. Beniki?
Yes.
Ms. Pepco-Rystor?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes eight to zero. Proposed ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash twenty two. An ordinance fixing the salaries of all employees of the city of Mishawaka except the Mishawaka Park Department, elected officials, and Mishawaka utilities for the city of Mishawaka, Indiana, for the year beginning January first, two thousand twenty.
May I have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the county council of the city of Mishawaka, your committee on budget and finance, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash twenty two, report that they have examined said matter and that in their opinion, it should be amended and adopted. This is signed by a majority of the committee and I move for its acceptance.
Second. All of the favor of the committee report, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, same side. This is the second reading of public hearing on proposed ordinance two thousand nineteen day twenty two. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance? Would you please come forward and give your name and address for the record?
Mr. President, council members, the mayor is here to speak in support of resolution, uh, proposed amendment two thousand nineteen dash twenty two. And I've just seen the amendments and I approve even most of those. First of all, I want to give my, even though this calls out a group of public safety employees, police, fire, AMS, gives them a different wage. I want to give my unequivocal support for that annual wage increase. It is difficult work doing what they do. Nobody knows or sees that more than me. Just this morning, we had firefighters put into a very dangerous situation where they discovered a victim of fire who hopefully will survive that. But having to be placed in that situation, I can't even imagine. I see calls where police officers are either fired upon or dealing with people with deadly weapons on a somewhat regular basis. It's public service beyond what most of us can comprehend. And it's public service that demands our respect, that demands our support. And when our public safety personnel are discharging their duties within their guidelines, they have no bigger supporters than me for doing their work. I always say that public safety is public service number one. It's our top priority and my administration puts its money where its mouth is. What you've just heard, that's why we do that. We make sure to give them the proper equipment, the proper training, the proper facilities, and do as best to pay and benefits and retirement as we can. While we have given raises each and every years of my nine years as mayor, some were admittedly small. Well, you know why that is the case? Due to our planning and preparation for our universally accepted accounting budget shortfall, otherwise known as the fiscal cliff. We have been transparent about the impacts of the fiscal cliff and our strategy and our plans to overcome that fiscal cliff. And our strategy is working. We are putting ourselves in a better position and we are pushing back that fiscal cliff. The fiscal cliff primarily impacts our general fund, where we anticipate a ten million dollar hit in revenue due to property tax caps. The general fund is predominantly what pays for our city services. Over half is dedicated to public safety. Over seventy-five percent is dedicated to payroll. And most of that payroll goes towards our two biggest departments in the city, our public safety departments, police and fire. Now, my primary goal is to weather our fiscal cliff, to provide best in area wages at the base level, to provide good benefits for as long as our police and firefighters wish to stay here working for the city of Mishawaka, and then to provide a decent retirement after they choose to retire at whenever it makes sense for them. And I can tell you that that is a very difficult juggling act. That brings me to my next point. For us to achieve these goals, we all have to be on the same page. One unified Mishawaka. My administration has strived to be transparent, to communicate any issues of relevance with the council and to be as inclusive with you as possible. Not only on wage and salary issues, but on all issues. And I've put our record up against any mayors, at least in my experience, and well beyond. Indeed, we have not had one party mind vote in my tenure and there's been unparalleled cooperation, as it should be. That's what Mishawaka citizens expect and that's what they demand of us. That's why they elect us. Mishawaka first. Well, that's not what happened on this issue. Now, while I support the annual salary wage increase, we do have some questions. First of all, for points two and three under the fire, those that were just brought to our attention are part of a collective bargaining agreement that was struck last year with Fire Department and their labor group. We have no authority to go in and change that without opening up the collective bargaining agreement that we are obligated to enforce and support. Then, on number four, where we give a new benefit to our firefighters for approved health and wellness related expenses. What's an approved health related expense? We're supposed to provide compensation for that. There's no language to say what's approved and what's not approved. And what's more is it creates more work for the administration. Now, we have to go track proceeds down and figure out a way how we're going to reverse receipts for this. Were we given one call to ask us about our opinion about how we might do this? Were we transparent? We were not. Then, number five, related to firefighter participation. This also applies to police because it's a point mentioned in there about group health insurance plan as follows. All firefighters, police officers represented, will not be subject to any increase in their respective group health insurance employee premium contribution for two thousand twenty. Well, we were perfectly clear that we were not going to seek an increase in wage or in healthcare insurance for two thousand twenty. So I want to repeat that. We were not going to pass along any health increase, health premium increases in two thousand twenty. Thought we were perfectly clear about that. I don't know why I made it into this language because the council has no authority to even discuss this as far as it relates to premium contributions in two thousand twenty or beyond. And so we do have to take some exceptions with some of this. So some of you talk a lot about transparency. There was a complete lack of transparency in your wage committee's process. We literally received this proposal at four oh one today by the amendment. That is despite it being signed on October first and October ninth by your bargaining units. Why the delay? I was promised a sit down meeting with President Evans to go over this before the vote. Why was there no attempt to set a meeting? This will have a big impact on our budget. Why did not one member of the committee, the council negotiating team, ask what the impact on the budget will be and how this impacts our fiscal cliff plan? This comes with a significant cost to the city that my administration team hasn't had time to even sit down and look at a calculator. Given the eleven hour and fifty ninth minute of the, of the timing of this. Has the council, council wage committee team factored all the costs in to this? Including overtime, permanent contributions, or Medicare, et cetera? Our revenue has not gone up significantly, significantly. I recommended a plan to save some city money on overpayment that our citizens are making for PSAT, nine one one communication center. Was there any consideration to adopting that recommendation so that we might have some more revenue that we could provide for more equipment or manpower wages for public safety? I also like to ask, what has changed over what has worked so well over the past nine years? What is different this year over the way we acted in the past with good cooperation and working deal? It strikes me as unfair. You get to give away big raises and then drop it on the administration with no notice, whatever, and then expect us to pay for it without any regards to if we have to make cuts to make that happen and what needs to be cut elsewhere to make it happen. Is this how you would do your budget at home or at your business? Speaking of fairness, is this fair to other public servants who I get to work with each and every day and see the great sacrifices that they make to make the Prince's city a cleaner, better, safer place to live? They provide great service too. Their service is valuable too. They work hard too. They deserve higher wages too. And I would strive to get them higher wages over what was provided so that we can keep up. But there again, I got to be the one to make the decision about how we can pay for that because there was no regard from the council. Again, while I absolutely support the annual salary increases for our public safety workers, I couldn't be more disappointed in the council's process and the complete lack of transparency and communication. Our citizens and their government were not well served. And I think that we took a step backwards here tonight in my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. President, I'm saying.
Yeah?
Mr. President, since the mayor has referenced the proposed amendment to the salary ordinance, I'd prefer that it be appropriate at this point in time for a motion to be made to amend the salary ordinance so that we can have all the facts in front of us as we continue the discussion and consideration this evening. So with that in mind, in order to reflect the outcome of the collective bargaining negotiations regarding compensation that have recently been concluded between the county council and representatives of both Mishawaka Professional Firefighters Union Local Number Three Sixty and Mishawaka Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Ninety One, I move that proposed ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty two be amended and I will ask Madam Clerk to read the substance of the amendment if she will.
Please.
Hold on a second. Second.
Fire, number one, increase the bi-weekly salary amount as well as the corresponding annual salary amount for all firefighters represented by Mishawaka Professional Firefighters Union Local Number Three Sixty to reflect a three point five percent across board increase for two thousand twenty. Two, increase the tier two lead paramedic compensation amount to one hundred dollars shift. Three, add a new term for tier two second seat advanced EMT paramedic compensation of fifty dollars shift. Number four, add a new term reflecting a one-time health and wellness stipend of two hundred dollars per firefighter represented by Mishawaka Professional Firefighters Union Local Number Three Sixty, payable as follows. A, each firefighter to provide the city with receipts confirming the expenditure of at least two hundred dollars for a gym membership of or another approved health and wellness related expense by no later than June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, with reimbursement to be made within thirty days of the submission of the receipts. Number five, add a new term related to firefighter participation in the city's group health insurance plan as follows. A, all firefighters represented by Mishawaka Professional Firefighters Union Local Number Three Sixty will not be subject to any, to any increase in their respective group health insurance employee premium contribution for two thousand twenty. Police, number one, increase the bi-weekly salary amounts as well as the all corresponding annual salary amount for all police officers represented by Mishawaka Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Ninety One to reflect a three point five percent across board increase for two thousand twenty. Number two, increase the equipment maintenance allowance to one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Number three, amend section five of proposed ordinance in order to delete the last sentence, thereby affording all police officers represented by Mishawaka Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Ninety One the opportunity to participate in the city's, state's four or five seven B plan under the same terms that govern the participation of other city employees. Number four, add a new term reflecting a one-time off-duty weapons stipend of four hundred dollars per police officer represented by Mishawaka Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Ninety One, payable as follows. A, two hundred dollars payable on or before June first, two thousand twenty, and B, two hundred dollars payable on or about December first, two thousand twenty. Number five, add a new term related to police officer participation in the city's group health insurance plan as follows. All police officers represented by Mishawaka Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Ninety One will not be subject to any increase in their respective group health insurance employee premium contribution for two thousand twenty.
Any question? Mr. Princky?
I would suggest, Mr. President, that we take a vote on the amendment.
Okay, there has been a motion, second.
I think you need to do a roll public.
It's up to the chair.
All right, it's up to the council board, if you can call for it.
You can call for it.
It's up to you.
Mr. Kimol?
That's, I'm with you, Mr. President.
Motion has been made in second on the amendment as granted by the city clerk. And clerk, please state full counsel.
Mrs. Volker?
No.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Mamelanti?
Yes.
Mr. Beniki?
Yes.
Ms. Pepco-Rystor?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Amendment acts of seven to one.
Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to speak on, on proposed ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty two? If you would please come forward and give your name and address for the record?
This is now on the as amended ordinance, proposed ordinance.
I'm sorry, and clerk, please.
You're opening the public hearing on the as amended proposed, proposed ordinance.
Okay. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the amendment to two thousand nineteen dash twenty two? Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Wait, I'm sorry, I'm not clear. We're speaking on the entire ordinance, we're just.
As amended.
Not the amendment itself, correct?
You're speaking on the proposed ordinance as amended.
Mr. Bulker, do you have a comment?
I'd like to make a, I would like to make a comment. I'm speaking specifically about items two and three under the fire proposal. If, in fact, collective bargaining is the way that these agreements should be made, I am questioning whether they should be included at all, and I think I would be, I would move for those to be removed from the ordinance.
Mr. Bulker, I'm going to defer that question to Mr. Hicksonbaugh because of the language that is proposed.
Thank you. I certainly can appreciate the question and like to vote for this evening, but this amendment is in fact the result of a collective bargaining process that has been enacted by ordinance here in Mishawaka, and it was the result of good faith negotiations between the council bargaining committee and the bargaining representatives of each respective public safety unit. So what we have in front of us is the outcome of collective bargaining. It is not inconsistent with collective bargaining. To that point, however, you know, a reference was made with regard to a concern over reopening the collective bargaining agreement. Each collective bargaining agreement that's in front of, that's relevant this evening has language that allows either party to request the reopening of wage negotiations during the term of the agreement, so there's nothing inconsistent for there to be discussions with regard to wages midstream. In each instance, it would be inconsistent with the agreements that were reached in prior years with the respective associations not to discuss wages this year since there was only a salary ordinance for 2019 that was approved and only language of the collective bargaining agreement that was relevant for 2019 with regard to compensation that would be in place absent renegotiation this year. So this is in fact consistent with the collective bargaining agreements in the term and the process that, to my knowledge, going way back before I first joined the council and represented the FOP, has been in place in Mishawaka since the collective bargaining ordinance was first established back in the 1970s, perhaps 1980s.
So may I ask a question? Is it possible then that the, during the language negotiation process, that this, that numbers two and three could be renegotiated?
Well, by state law, the council is empowered to establish compensation by ordinance since actually IC 36-8-3-3, and I will quote, "The annual compensation of all members of the police and fire departments and other appointees shall be fixed by ordinance of the legislative body not later than November 1st of each year for the ensuing budget year." So that topic of compensation clearly is a broader term of art than salaries. It has long been the practice here in Mishawaka, and the city records a replete with evidence of this fact. Items such as uniform allowances, equipment allowances, other forms of compensation that go beyond salary are negotiated between the council and the various public safety entities. So in my opinion, this is consistent with that statutory authority that we've been given.
So I guess I'd like to make a comment then. I am not an expert in wage negotiations by any means, but I am concerned that there is a conflict between the administration and the wage negotiation committee on what should be and shouldn't be negotiated between the two. So I guess my request would be perhaps we could clarify that so that we don't have this kind of misunderstanding next year.
I might admit at this time that during negotiations, I reached out to both of our attorneys, Mr. Rogan and Mr. Spitz, to attend negotiations. Neither one of them attended, not one meeting. So before, we've always attended, they've always attended. This year, they felt they didn't need, whether they felt they didn't need to be there or what, but neither one of them reached out to attend and admitted that they were given the dates. So that just answers your question.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Madam Clerk, would you please vote the council? Again, if we vote on that, then.
It would be mandatory, but I believe.
Pardon?
I believe Mrs. Bulker has a motion on the floor.
I do. I have a motion on the floor to remove items two and three from the ordinance under fire.
Is there a second? Okay, sir. I have a second. We will move on.
You can continue the public hearing.
Okay. Again, I'll ask, is anyone else which should speak in favor of proposed ordinance 2019-22? If you would come forward and give your name and address for the record. Is there anyone, again, anyone which should speak? Again, proposed ordinance 2019-22, please come forward. Again, is there anyone which should speak in opposition? Please come forward and give your name and address. Is there any council members that wish to speak on proposed ordinance 2019-22?
As amended.
As amended.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Hicksonbaugh.
Thank you. First and foremost, let me start out by thanking you, Mr. President, and Mr. Belovich, Mr. Tanner, as well as Mr. Mameleki, who was there for at least one meeting, for your participation in this process. And also thank and acknowledge the work of the respective bargaining teams for our police and fire departments who also did a very professional job throughout this process. I think collectively, one of our goals was to establish a collaborative atmosphere where there was, in fact, good faith negotiations that took place rather than having a predetermined amount. And I think it's safe to say that the feedback that we received was that this year was a good faith bargain that took place between the council and each respective public service His honor makes, you know, several very appropriate points, and we all need to be concerned with regard to fiscal responsibility and in particular, the impending fiscal cliff. But I would respectfully suggest that the council was, council negotiating team was cognizant of those factors as we have engaged in this bargain. First and foremost, we met with the mayor and the controller prior to the inception of formal bargaining to have some discussions and received some follow-up information from the controller as was requested with regard to the impact of what 1% of an increase does to the city budget, both for public safety and then for our employees across the board. So we appreciated that information, and we did engage in a discussion with the administration with regard to overall philosophy and some strategies with regard to negotiation. My understanding, and I certainly would ask Mr. Belovich and Mr. Emmons to correct me if their recollection is any different, was that leading that meeting that we had some clear discussion about 2.5% being the net impact on police and fire salaries, that we took the 1.5% and added the $500 to it. That really boiled down to, as I recall, an indication that that ended up being equivalent to 2.5% on the pension base. What we ended up here with regard to a bargain on wages is 3.5%, which clearly is more, but based upon the information that we received from the controller, which I have no reason to doubt its accuracy, the record should reflect that an additional 1% for police totals approximately $63,134, and additional 1% for fire totals $68,208. So we were cognizant of those amounts. Surely, every tax dollar is important, and we need to be careful with what we spend. But we as a group, I think it's safe to say about that making that investment of an additional percent for 2020 was a good investment on behalf of the community. Why? In my mind, it boils down to the fact that we've done a fantastic job in making investments in equipment and training and bricks and mortar and amenities in this community. And I applaud the administration for having been able to enact an raise for each of the nine past years. But at some point, those other investments that we make begin to lose their value if we don't make an ongoing investment in the people who provide the services throughout the city, not just public safety, but all of our city services. And at some point, we just need to do a little more to try to achieve parity with other communities if nothing else. One of the things that I understand to have occurred last year was that there was a raise that was proposed by the administration and enacted with regard to the chiefs and assistant chiefs of each public safety department, and that raise amounted to $5,000 per person. As I understand it, the explanation for it, and I agree with this, was that we need to retain the highly qualified public safety officers that we have here in Mishawaka. I believe that begs the question, if that philosophy applies to the chiefs, does it not also apply to the rank and file who work in a squad car, work in a fire truck, work in an ambulance every day? I believe that it does. Mr. President made it available point that there was a limitation in terms of process for the corporation council to participate in the negotiations, and he chose not to. My understanding also is that there have been some meetings with, you know, one or more of the members of the bargaining committee as well as President Emmons, you know, with regard to the outcome of these negotiations. So certainly there was never any intent on anybody's part to try to deny anyone the information that they needed with regard to the outcome of negotiations. And again, it's my understanding that there has been some communication prior to today. We also took a look at, as a group, what the impact is of the proposed 1.5% salary increase plus $500 on payroll salary levels throughout the city. And Mr. Tanner in particular did some number crunching for us, and we were able to conclude that for many of our employees, the combination of the 1.5 and the $500 does reflect more than, of course, a 1.5% raise, and I'll defer to Mr. Tanner to work through the numbers. But we did look at that issue very closely. With regard to the group health insurance point and our negotiation strategy, that was a point that was discussed in our initial meeting with the administration, and I actually had a follow-up conversation with his honor with regard to the fact that we were going to integrate that into our negotiation strategy as we worked with each respective department. And then I also recall Mr. Emmons and I having a similar conversation with the controller. At some point in the process, that became public knowledge despite the fact that I thought that we had agreed on that being part of our strategy. But regardless, it is difficult for me to define the term compensation as not including a lack of an increase in insurance. So I'm glad to hear that no city employees will experience an increase this year. So from that standpoint, I don't know that, you know, the concern with regard to the inclusion of that provision in this bargaining raises any major issues. Perhaps lastly, I would say that for better or for worse, state law has enacted a process where the council establishes compensation for two work groups and two work groups only, police and fire, and the administration takes the lead with regard to the other work groups. I would agree that there's some inconsistency there, but it is consistent with the law for the council to take the lead, as has been done in the past with regard to this process. And I think we all have a common goal of making it work as smoothly as possible in the best interest of the community, and my hope is that we can find a way to be on the same page. But personally, I stand behind this ordinance as amended, particularly with regard to the public safety component. The mayor was absolutely correct with regard to highlighting the risks that our public safety personnel engage in every day, and I believe that an additional 1% investment in their compensation is a good investment on the part of the community. Finally, I will say, with regard to other city employees, my suspicion is that if the mayor is in fact able to review the budget and come forward with a proposal to increase the proposed compensation for all city employees, as the law allows to happen even into the next budget year, I would be shocked if there weren't nine votes on the part of the council to approve enhanced compensation for all of our city employees because we value all their work. It is in the best interest of the community for us to be able to recruit and retain the best talent. And the reasons why we enacted a raise for police and fire chiefs, the reason why we're being asked to consider an enhanced increase in compensation for our public safety employees also supports an increase in compensation for all city employees as is possible. So again, I appreciate the work of all involved, and I will be voting in favor of this ordinance this evening as amended. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball. Any other council members which should speak? Mr. Bulker?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to thank the members of bargaining units for both the IAF 360 and FOP 91, my fellow members of the bargaining committee, Wage and Body Negotiation Committee, rather. Mr. Emmons was a great representative on behalf of the entire council, but also Mr. Hicksonbaugh and also Mr. Belovich. We did do, as Mr. Hicksonbaugh mentioned, everything in good faith effort and the transparent effort. While I can't speak on behalf of this particular specific document being presented to the administration, I do know that the leadership teams of both departments were well aware of what the raises were expected to be and the other tertiary benefits were going to be because I received calls from leadership of both departments. So I don't know what the confusion might be there, but it, the discussion was had, awareness was available, and we were transparent and proceeded in good faith effort every step of the way. I've always been told if you can't say something nice, don't say something, and also I'll end it there.
Thank you, Mr. Tanner. Anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would personally just like to thank our negotiating team and you gentlemen for all of your work. I had the privilege of sitting in some pre-bargaining meetings, and I certainly learned a lot through the, through that experience, and I will be voting in favor of this amendment tonight as well.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to thank, take time and thank all those that were involved that had to endure these long, numerous meetings. I know in the years past, whether I've been on the committees or not, I've tried to attend This year, I'm likely to sign me up for to coach too many sporting teams, so I apologize to both parties involved for not being able to attend, other than that last one for a portion of it. But I do know it takes a lot of time and effort on both sides, so I do want to take this time to personally thank both sides and all three sides for your time and energy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, Mrs. Bulker?
Thank you. I also want to say thank you. I was able to sit in on a lot of the pre-meetings and have also sat in salary negotiations in years past, and I certainly appreciate everything that fire and police departments do. Believe me, you guys know that I needed you, and I personally appreciate it as well. My biggest concern, and I will support the ordinance, but I wish that this confusion for next year could be cleared up before we get to this point. Thank you. Thank you.
I would like to kind of take a little bit step forward along with a step backwards about negotiations. We met a number of times this year compared to the last two or three years. Before, we've always been basically maybe one, two, maximum three meetings before we settled. But this year, we made a kind of a promise to both police and fire negotiating teams that we would negotiate, that we would sit down and listen to their concerns, and we honored that. We honored that this year. We had an actual negotiation sessions. The police was a little bit quicker, the firemen were a little longer, but we negotiated with each group in good faith. They negotiated with us in good faith. We listened to their concerns from the fire and the police. They listened to our concerns. Negotiation is usually a given take. We didn't ask anything in return from the police to fire, other than good faith and sitting down and being realistic with us that they were proposing, and they honored that. And we honored our pledge to them. They are, both groups are working, they spend a lot of time away from their families, they have jobs that a lot of us wouldn't take on, even if the pay was doubled. We respect a lot from those two groups. And so, this year, as a council, as a negotiating team, we felt that they deserved a little bit more, because in the past, they've been held back, and I understand why, but there's going to be a tie when you got that loosen first a little bit. Either group didn't come in and demand a whole lot. Sure, when they came in, the proposals were kind of lopsided between ours and theirs, but that's negotiations. But when it came down to strategic talks, they were honest with us, both groups, police and fire. Both had different concerns, and we addressed those concerns. And I got to commend their groups for being very professional, being honest, being forthcoming, and not one time were voices raised in a demand that we meet their proposal. They were very professional at all times, and I appreciate that, and so does the team. And I appreciate our team for being very professional and working with the police and fire. Negotiations are hard at times. Negotiations cannot, they're not always fun, but it's an obligation that the council is required to do, and we met that responsibility. And the police and fire met their responsibility for their membership. And again, I thank them both for their cooperation and their professionalism in negotiation. Thank you. And again, I thank our team of Mr. Tanner, Mr. Belovich, and Mr. Hixenbaum for the job that they did. Thank you. Madam Clerk, I'll call for a question.
Mrs. Bulker?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Mambalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Beniki?
Yes.
Mr. Pedro Reister?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hixenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance 2019-22, as amended, passes eight to zero. Proposed ordinance number 2019-23, as amended, to civil city budget and tax levy for 2020. This is the final adoption.
May I have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the common council of the city of Mishawaka, your committee on budget and finance, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance number 2019-23, reports that they have examined said matter, and in their opinion, should be adopted. This is signed by a majority of the committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Second. All those in favor of the committee report, say aye.
Aye.
No, opposed, same time. So, we can have a public hearing now? Y'all give the vote? Okay. Is there any council members that wish to speak?
Mr. President? Yes. I simply want to thank the controller and the department heads for spending some time with us over the course of the budget and finance committee meetings. I know everybody works hard, and the last thing they want to do is come back in the evening for those type of meetings, but it not only gives us a chance to ask questions and have discussion with regard to the budget, but also to get into some important issues and some discussions that go beyond that. So, thank you again for the work that they did, the information that they provided, and we much appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any other council members who wish to speak?
I'd like to ask a question.
Call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the council?
Mrs. Bulker?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Mambalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Beniki?
Yes.
Mr. Pedro Reister?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hixenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance 2019-23, as amended, passes eight to zero. Proposed ordinance number 2019-26, an ordinance declaring an emergency and transferring and reappropriating funds within the budget adopted for the calendar year ending December 31, 2019. This is a transfer of funds from the human resources department in an amount of $7,000 and the clerk's office in an amount of $5,000.
And thank you. May I have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the common council of the city of Mishawaka, your committee on budget and finance, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance number 2019-26, reports that they have examined said matter and that their opinion should be adopted. This is signed by a majority of the committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Second. All of the favor of the committee report? Say aye.
Aye.
No, opposed, same time. This is the second reading and public hearing on proposed ordinance 2019-26. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance, would you please come forward and give your name and address for the record?
Mr. President, I am the council Rebecca Miller, city controller. I'm looking for your approval of these two transfers, one in human resources department and one in clerk's office, where we deem necessary transfers between personnel services and contractual other services and charges for both of them.
Any questions for Ms. Miller? Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance? Would you please come forward and give your name and address for the record? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this proposed ordinance? If you would please come forward and give your name and address for the record? Seeing none, are there any council members that wish to speak on this proposed ordinance? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. Question. Madam Clerk, would you please call the council?
Mrs. Bulker?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Mambalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Beniki?
Yes.
Mr. Pedro Reister?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hixenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes eight to zero.
Okay, moving on to the floor. This is where members of the public are invited to speak on only nine agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that wish to address the council at this time?
My name is Mark Ryan. I'm the union president, professional fire department's local 360. I'd like to commend our wage committee, as well as the councils committee on the budget and finance, on the wage negotiations that we just finished, Councilman Tanner, Councilman Evans, Councilman Belovich, and Councilman Hixenbaum. I really feel that this is the first year in probably six years that I've been involved in the wage negotiations that we really did, like Councilman Evans said, had real negotiations. In previous years, we got the feeling that we were told, this is what you get, and that's I feel that reasonable people met a reasonable agreement, and I wouldn't say that we were both successful, but we both walk out of there feeling like we were successful. When negotiation is a given take, I think we gave as well as took what we feel we deserved. As the mayor said, I hope he does advocate for every member of this city to also get They all deserve it. All members that work at the city deserve it. You know, we're all important in our roles as being why people move to Mishawaka, why people like living in Mishawaka, and why people stay in Mishawaka. We all enjoy working at the fire department, being a public safety entity. You know, we like to, everybody in the city likes to see our racking trucks in the stations, our nice new trucks that go down the road responding to calls, but just as a reminder, they are tools in our toolbox. They are nothing without the people that make our fire department dirty, every single day. We are all professional. We all advocate for every single citizen and visitor that comes into our city. And just as a reminder, my job as union president and our negotiating team is to advocate for our 111 members to get the best wage package we can. I don't negotiate for anybody else in the city, any other union or non-union entity. So, I'm happy with my progress, and I'm happy that we got the support that we felt like we needed. We had too many years of 1%, and our members really felt like they were getting forgotten. So, I'd like to thank you all, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the board, the council at this time? Okay, we do the floor. Now, we'll move on to unfinished business. Madam Clerk? New business?
Just a reminder that our next meeting will be on November 6th, because of election day, and it's a Wednesday.
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Tanner. Okay. If there's no other further business, you come before this council, then a motion to adjourn is in order. So, we'll continue adjourn.